Let's go ahead and, I want to welcome everybody. If everybody could go ahead and stand and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag and the Prayer.
All right, let us power heads. Heavenly Father, as always, we come to you today with thanks. We thankful for your love, your grace, your mercy, all the blessings you bestow upon us here in Talbot County, state of Maryland and our great country. Father, as we head into Waterfowl, we pray for all those who are visiting here for a successful, successful festival. We pray that it's safe and fun and enjoyable and good fellowship. And we continue this season of thanks. Father, we just pray for, again, for safe travels for all those here in Talbot County. Those who are visiting, those who might be leaving and for their safe return. We just ask for all your blessings throughout in your hand to be on all of that. In Jesus the Most Precious and Holy Name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. So we've had the agenda before us. Is there any additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda, council? Okay. All right, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent.
The agenda.
Agenda, I'm sorry, the agenda. What did I say, minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the next one, sorry. Okay. Next is the minutes of October fourteenth. Councils had a chance to take a look at that. Is there any additions, deletions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, all right. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is dispersments of November fourth. We've had a chance to take a look at that, council. Is there any additions, deletions or corrections to the dispersments? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, first is a very, very important, Operation Green Light for the Veterans proclamation. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Proclamation supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Talbot County have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for all who have selflessly served our country and the Talbot County community in the U.S. Armed Forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Talbot County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers throughout the nation to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health, disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas annually approximately two-hundred thousand service members transition to civilian life, with forty-four to seventy-two percent experiencing high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life.
Okay.
And whereas an estimated ninety percent of service members who deploy for military operations and experience or witness a traumatic event are at a higher risk for developing post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, and many are at a high risk for suicide during the first year of following military service, with an average of seventeen point six veterans dying by suicide every day. And whereas various organizations, including the Cambridge VA Outpatient Clinic, Healthcare for Homeless Veterans, Maryland's Commitment to Veterans, Perry Point VA Medical Center, Supportive Services for Veterans Families, and the Veteran and Military Support Alliance provide critical resources across Caroline, Dorchester, Kent, Queen Anne's, Talbot, Worcester and Wycomico Counties. These resources include healthcare, mental health support, housing assistance, crisis intervention, substance use services and peer support for veterans. And whereas, the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Talbot County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be accorded to them. Therefore, be it resolved in observance of Operation Green Light for veterans, Talbot County encourages its citizens to recognize the importance of honoring those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in their place of business or residence from November fourth, two thousand twenty-five through November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this fourth day of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved as read.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, second. Put it into the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, is there anybody here? Yes, come on up. Katie or Lisa?
I'm Rachel.
Oh, Rachel, okay, I got you. Please sit, please sit down. Yes, yes, introduce yourself if you don't mind.
Hi, I'm Rachel Stoyanoff from Midshore Behavioral Health. I've been sent to share this message with you. The Midshore region is home to a strong and diverse veteran community. Approximately six point eight of Maryland's adult civilian population are veterans, many of whom reside in rural areas like the Midshore where access to healthcare, mental health support, employment and social support can be very limited. About twenty-five percent of Maryland veterans live with a disability compared to just thirteen point two percent of non-veterans, which further underscores the importance of community awareness and your local support. Operation Green Light for Veterans is an important initiative that encourages residents, businesses and public buildings to display green lights as a visible show of appreciation and solidarity. Beyond honoring their service, this helps raise awareness of the challenges veterans face and connects them to vital local resources, ensuring that they feel recognized and supported across all ages and stages of their lives. The Midshore Behavioral Health Database is regularly updated and a good place to find resources for veterans in this community. Please reach out to Midshore Behavioral Health with any additional questions or if we can provide any further support to your veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Step?
No, I just.
You can stay, you can, yep, we got something for you. Okay, don't go nowhere. Yeah, okay, all right.
I just, it is a pleasure to do this every year for you guys. So number one, thank you for that. But most importantly, I just want to thank all of our veterans that are either here or tuning in and that live here in Talbot County. Just thank you for, again, for your service and sacrifice as well as your families. And extra special thank you to all Marines out there as they're celebrating their two-hundred-fiftieth year come on the tenth, so thank you.
And the Navy.
Yep.
Well, and I see that we have a number of veterans in the room now in uniform. But the truth of the matter is that we look around this community and you don't know, you don't recognize how many veterans are around us and contributing in so many different ways to this community. And thank you for your service and we are honored to be able to do something along these lines to recognize you.
Having been married to a Vietnam War veteran, I know firsthand how important these services are. So very grateful for what's being done. Thank you for Green Light.
Certainly thank you for coming in this evening and I want to thank all the veterans that have served that are here with us this evening. Having a veteran at home in our family, I know the importance of your service and the resources that's available when they come back home as well. So thank you so much.
Yep, and thank you, veterans, that's for sure. You mean a lot to us in this community, that's for sure. And we appreciate you, we love you guys and really appreciate everything you've done through the years to keep us safe, that's for sure. So if you guys, the veterans and everybody would like to come up, we'll take a picture of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Madam Secretary, next is update to the Maryland Environmental Service. Guys, want to come on up? Yep?
Does it come back to follow?
That is.
Wish I could say we were important?
You are important.
We'll give them a shot.
Wouldn't trash be important?
Not quite important.
Well, you stop collecting it and you find out how important it is.
So we got you, we got you guys scheduled it for ten minutes now, okay?
Yeah, I know, I can see.
Don't get, yep, okay. I just want to make sure you see that now, okay?
We will, we'll keep it on.
Okay, all right, buddy.
Well, thank you again. It's a pleasure to be here. Once again, my name is Tim Ford. I am the Managing Director for Environmental Operations for the Maryland Environmental Service. So I am in the solid waste division of what we do. With me is Gary Laseco, who is our Senior Project Manager and responsible for our Eastern Shore operations, including Midshore One and Midshore Two. Next slide. So we'll start with money. This is the Midshore Two FY twenty-six tipping fee. It's seventy-one fifty. I will note that in today's paper Baltimore County posted that their tipping fee is a hundred and thirty-five dollars a ton. So the regional fees are rising. We're happy to keep a proverbial trash lid on our tipping fees to the extent that we can. So our fees for twenty-six will be seventy-one fifty at the landfill and brushes at forty-six fifty. There will be a suicide surcharge. It was going to be fifteen dollars a ton. The county weighed in and we listened and it's five dollars a ton beginning on January first, two thousand twenty-six. You're welcome. So we still, it's important for the county. We are responsible for post-closure care for the Midshore One landfill. Part of that includes the old Easton landfill, which is adjacent to the Midshore One landfill. We have an explosive membrane there. It has a twenty-year warranty. We're probably, will we, almost ten years into that?
Yeah, we installed it in two thousand sixteen and received MD approval in two thousand seventeen, okay?
Yeah, so we test it every year. It's in good shape. As a matter of good fiscal responsibility, we're going to begin to reserve for replacement for that cap in terms of monies. So when we have to replace it in ten or fifteen years, we'll have the cash for it. Some regulatory changes. There is a methane role. Midshore One landfill now qualifies. Under that methane rule before, prior, it was voluntary. Landfill gas collection was voluntary. We were doing it anyway. So this rule really won't have much of an impact on us other than our ability to collect carbon credits because we no longer be voluntary, those will no longer be available to us. And then leachate management, we manage leachate for both the existing landfill at Midshore One and of course we bring Midshore Two. Leachate as a pass-through to Easton Utilities. Come on, Gary?
Sure, these are.
He's a numbers guy, huh?
I guess. These are just some statistics to bring you up to speed on recent trends, I guess, at the transfer station. And what's presented there is the last twelve months, the rolling twelve months of inbound trash and brush as well as scale house transactions at the transfer station. As you can see, this last quarter, first quarter of FY twenty-six, so that's July through September for us, we received about eleven thousand tons of trash, so good quarter. Brush was kind of right in line with kind of the general average of about a thousand tons a quarter. And as you can see, that's a, it's a very busy place there at the transfer station. We get nearly ten thousand transactions there every quarter. So the biggest takeaway from this slide is that we had a really good first quarter in terms of inbound waste and right now we're just sitting slightly above our budgeted inbound trash projection of about forty-one thousand tons per year. And this is just the homeowner drop-off facility that is co-located with Midshore One Transfer Station. And again, it's a very heavily used site. There's cars and constituents in and out of that facility pretty much every minute through the work week as well as on Saturdays. So we had about twenty-four thousand visits over the last twelve months, including over six thousand this past quarter. That operation is partially funded through the sale of punch cards. As you can see there, you know, we sell, you know, over five hundred twenty dollar punch cards per quarter.
So Midshore Two landfill, we began a hundred and twenty-eight foot lift and sell three in September. We're rolling along there. We have begun, you can hit the next one. Next slide. We are able to begin construction on a new landfill cell. This is the remaining, we got remaining two landfill cells. Finish out the completion for Midshore Two. That'll get us through two thousand forty-two. That was all part of the agreements that we reached with Caroline County last year with your help. And also with your help, we were able to issue service revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-five revenue bonds. We just completed that sale. Thank you again to the county for supporting our efforts to get a double-A bond rating and excellent rate of three point six two percent with Stonex Financial, Inc. And we closed on that just in the last month. So thank you for your help on that. It's your good credit that helps our good credit and we appreciate it.
Yep.
Go ahead. And that's the debt service. You got to pay those things back just in case you didn't know that. Go ahead. So again, we are working on a new cell construction now. That'll include cell five and a leachate tank construction. We're also beginning the design for the cell one, which would be the last cell. We expect to start construction on that in about two years. We did award a contract to Alan Myers for six point five million and again, they're ongoing. And then Gary, this is really what you probably want to talk about and that's our recycling programs. And I know there's been some issues. Gary, we want to talk about that briefly in our three minutes that we have left. So Gary, go ahead.
Sure, so the county requested that we remove the bins from Perry Cabin Park back in July. And we did, so we redistributed those bins to a number of existing locations within the county, mainly closer to Easton, so the transfer station, and then here in town at Autozone Amish Market. And then kind of shortly after that, we recognized as well as the county that the St. Michael's Market, formerly Grau's, was receiving a lot of the recyclables that were, you know, formerly going to the Perry Cabin site. So we worked with the owners there to locate some additional bins there as well as provide some additional collections. Some weekend collections there to alleviate the, you know, any concerns that they had with recyclable materials or other material building up at that site. Recently, we've worked with the owners of St. Michael's Market as well as Mr. Clark to develop a concept plan to relocate that existing recycling station to a different area at St. Michael's Market, mainly in the back there where it's kind of out of the way of their inbound deliveries and employee traffic. And I would just add to that, you know, so we continue to work with the St. Michael's Market as well as Mr. Clark to make sure that, you know, all parties are satisfied with the service down there. And this is, I believe these are now finally, the audit's finally complete on these, but just a summary of our recycling program over the last fiscal year, so this is fiscal year twenty-five. We took in about one point one million in revenue and had a little over nine hundred thousand dollars in expenses. So the net income for that project was about two hundred thousand dollars. That is distributed equally amongst the counties after the project's operating reserve is satisfied. And as you can see there, Talbot County will yield about forty-eight thousand dollars into their county surplus account on top of twenty-six thousand dollars that was in there previously for their balance in that account, which again can be used for recycling activities, you know, within the county.
Including improvements at, you know, the market. That's your money.
Okay.
And lastly, in the last thirty seconds, we'll once again be providing recycling services at the Waterfowl Festival this year. We've been in close contact with them over the last few weeks to make sure that there's an appropriate number of bins and bins placed in the right locations for this year's festival.
That's great.
I'm told Santa will be making a return as well.
That's good. Okay.
Any questions?
Yep.
Two quick ones. One, thank you for the increased pickups at the St. Michael's Market. That's probably the most important thing that you can do for the happiness of our Talbot County constituents. When somebody comes up to one of these stations with a car full, the last thing they want to do is see all the bins are full. They're not going to take them back home with them. They're probably not going to drive them all to the far side of Easton to the transfer station. And that's when we get the backups, which we don't want anybody to do. We tell people not to do that, but that's what, that's what in fact happens. So the increasing the frequency, are you doing the same thing when you see or anticipate similar issues at the Amish Market or any of the other locations?
We monitor all the sites and if we need to increase pickups, we will, we'll realm in that direction. So yes, we do. Specifically at the Amish Market, have we had to increase pickups there?
No, you know, what we do on top of just the pickups though is when our folks go around and collect the recyclables, if they notice non-recyclables there, like, you know, perhaps somebody leaves, you know, a piece of furniture or what have you, we will send out another employee later in the day to remove, you know, those non-recyclables so that additional things that shouldn't be there don't accumulate.
It doesn't invite more.
Yeah, to try to stop it at the pass.
Right, thank you.
We're very much sensitive to the need to both maintain volume there and to keep these things from being unsightly. Because if they're unsightly, then you're going to run into problems with your host.
Well, I know, I know our constituents down in the St. Michael's area are looking forward to the expeditious redevelopment of the site on the north end of town there. So thank you for working with us toward that.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions for council? Okay, guys, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Good report, yep.
Thank you, Kevin. Thanks, Gary.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda is presentation of the FY twenty-six Senior Care Plan. Okay.
You guys are serious about the ten-minute rule.
We got the clock, yep, we got the clock. We just trying to get people used to it, okay?
I understand completely. All right, well, thank you for having us here this evening. We'd like to present our senior care program, some statistics from FY twenty-five and then our plan for FY twenty-six. I'm Carrie Addy. I'm the Nurse Program Supervisor and with me is Dr. Callie, our Health Officer. So I know you're all quite familiar with the program at this point, so I'm going to try to keep it brief.
Okay.
Senior Care is a statewide grant program funded through the Maryland Department of Aging. It provides services for people sixty-five and older who may be at risk of nursing facility placement. The goal is to help seniors remain as safely as possible in the community for as long as possible. And the cost to the state's a lot less by funding programs like this than to pay for the cost of a patient's care in the nursing facility. So we have four core services, screening for eligibility for all available supportive programs, comprehensive assessment of individual needs and that's conducted in the home, a case manager to secure and coordinate services and a pool of gap-filling funds to purchase services for those who are eligible. A little on the history of the program. It began as a pilot program administered by the Health Department in nineteen eighty-two. It's a formal partnership between the Health Department, Upper Shore Aging, Social Services and Talbot County Government. We're one of only two counties in Maryland in which the local health department directly administers the senior care program in conjunction with their AERS program. The AERS program stands for Assessment, Evaluation and Review Services. Every county has an AERS program at their local health department. We use an evidence-based assessment tool to evaluate the client's physical health, functional abilities, cognitive and psychosocial health. And the assessment's conducted by a trained nurse or social worker in the client's home. Following the assessment, we develop a personalized comprehensive care plan to address each client's individual needs. The client and the family are involved in the process in order to prioritize their needs. As I said on the last slide, we're one of only two counties in Maryland that administer their senior care program through their local health department and this benefits the clients in several ways. The nurse or social worker that conducted the assessment then becomes the client's primary case manager. Our clients aren't passed along to another agency after their assessment, which is usually what happens in other jurisdictions. And then the client has one point of contact who's a skilled professional. They get to know that person and the nurse or social worker gets to know them and they become a trusted source for guidance and information in the healthcare system. Annual Client Satisfaction Survey consistently yields high marks. And again, this year we achieved ninety-eight percent of our clients reporting that they are satisfied or very satisfied overall with their services. So who's eligible for the program? They need to be a Talbot County resident who's age sixty-five. So who's eligible for the program? They need to be a Talbot County resident who's age sixty-five or older. They must have a moderate or severe functional disability, and then they also need to meet financial eligibility requirements that are set forth by the Department of Aging. For an individual, they can have income up to three thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars a month and assets less than eleven thousand. A married couple can have income up to four thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars a month and assets less than fourteen thousand. And the asset limit does not count the home they live in or the car that they drive. The budget plan for FY twenty-six includes seven percent for administration, twenty-three percent for case management, and seventy percent for gap filling for direct services for seniors. The chart here shows the past five years of the numbers of clients served and the funding for the program. In FY twenty-five, we served two hundred twenty-three clients, two hundred twenty-three unduplicated clients. So that has been the highest in recent history. I even went back a little further than this five-year period, and it continued to be the highest number we've served in recent history. Thankfully, due to county support and an increase in the Department of Aging funding, we did not have to have a waitlist in FY twenty-five, and I'm hopeful that we will not have to start one this year. Our clients are often in a crisis situation when we meet them, and getting services in place right away can avert a negative outcome. And then I also just want to point out that in FY twenty-five, our average spending per client works out to just over a thousand dollars per client. The median cost of nursing facility care is one hundred forty-six thousand dollars per year. So not saying that senior care can fix everything, but what we can do with a thousand dollars for a year, if it prevents or even just delays a nursing facility placement, then it's a huge savings to the system. So I referred to our gap-filling funds, but here's a breakdown of how the funds were spent in FY twenty-five. Our biggest chunk went to chore services at twenty-three percent of the funding. Chores are one of the first things that people start to struggle with as they age and their mobility declines. Emergency response systems, that's the little buttons they can wear around their neck to summon help if they need it. That was twenty-two percent of our spending. And that's really important because so many of our clients live alone, and they need access to help if they were to have a medical emergency or a fall. Medical supplies accounted for twenty-two percent of the sp- the spending, and that includes incontinence supplies, nutritional supplements, medical equipment such as shower chairs, bedside commodes, roller later walkers, et cetera. Personal care accounted for twenty percent of the funds we've spent. We have an awesome CNA, Donna. She provides our personal care services, but we, we still have not figured out a clone her yet, so we're supplementing that with an agency provider. And then twelve percent of the funds went to prescription medication co-pays. Cost is a big reason sometimes for non-compliance with medication regimen, so we're really trying to reduce that obstacle for people. And then finally, adult daycare services is just a small little sliver at one percent there. We have a separate grant that pays for most of this service, but senior care does supplement it a little bit. And I'll run quickly through our statistics for FY twenty-five. Most haven't changed a whole lot from the previous year. Seventy-three percent of our clients are female, twenty-seven percent are male, fifty-four percent of our clients are white, forty-five percent are black or African-American. By age, our biggest age group continues to be our seventy-five to eighty-four-year-olds. But interesting, for the past two years, our younger age group has increased by several percentage points each year. That's our sixty-five to seventy-four-year-olds. And then living arrangements, fifty-five percent of our clients live alone, and that increases the risk of injury, social isolation, depression, anxiety, malnutrition, and a host of other things. Our client's average monthly income, this year we saw an increase in the percent that are living at or below the poverty level, which is a monthly income of one thousand three hundred four dollars or less. So it went from thirty-one percent last year to thirty-seven percent this year. Also of note, forty-three percent of our clients have Medicare only, no supplemental insurance to cover that twenty percent that Medicare does not. Functional status, our assessment includes an evaluation of their functional abilities. That's their activities of daily living, bathing, dressing, toileting, ambulating, meal prep, chores, et cetera. And thirty-nine percent had a severe impairment in their activities of daily living. And then also, thirty-eight percent of our clients received a nursing facility level of care when we submit our assessments in the Department of Health System. That means we've got thirty-eight percent of our clients, they're living in the community, but needing the level of care that would be provided in a nursing facility. They're supported at home by family, friends, neighbors, other community programs, and our senior care program. And our program and our clients depend on all of our support and partnerships from, from all other sources, county government. In addition to funding that supplements our program, you all have stepped up to advocate for our program as well. When there was threats of funding cuts in FY twenty-five, your advocacy really got the attention up at the state level, and those cuts did not happen. So I really wish to extend my gratitude for that. And then we're also grateful, grateful for the support we received from the Health Department, our health officer, Upper Shore Aging, Department of Social Services, Commission on Aging, and then many civic church and community organizations. This year, I want to give special recognition to the Midshore Community Foundation, who awarded us some grant money from the Albert and Diane Miller Fund to provide additional support to our seniors. So we are extremely grateful for that support. Program challenges, a challenge for us is always the growth of the aging population, especially here in Talbot County, where we have the highest percent population of seniors in the state. That's not expected to change at all. The Department of Aging has a new initiative called Longevity Ready Maryland. I've put their website on the slide here. It really has a lot of useful data. It allows you to drill down to county-level data, and they also have some great details about their ten-year plan and goals. We continue to face some of the other challenges too. The growing preference for aging at home is going to place an additional strain on already limited resources such as housing, transportation, and a shortage of workers to provide in-home care. Just a quick acknowledgement that November's National Family Caregivers Month, and family caregivers are providing invaluable unpaid care to their loved ones, all while trying to juggle work and children and their own healthcare needs. In FY twenty-seven, the Department of Aging plans to transition the name of the senior care program to SOAR, which stands for Supporting Older Adults with Resources. So we're excited and we look forward to being a part of that transition and the planning and implementation. More details are available on the website. And just want to wrap up by first thanking you again as our county leaders for your continued support of this program. We would not have such a successful program if we did not have your support like we do, and we would not be able to serve the number of clients that we serve. So thank you so much. My favorite card, if I can have a few seconds. I'd really like to share a couple client testimonials in their own words. We asked them, you know, what the senior care program means to them, and I'll just share a couple. I think the senior program is great. You've given me all the help a person can ask for. It's a great thing to get what I ask for and have a good feeling about everybody that I talk to. They're so nice and cooperative. It's a great service to help people. And then the second one, I believe that the senior program of the Talbot County Health Department in Easton epitomizes the meaning of the word team. They are of one accord and never procrastinate on, forget, or minimize any issues for which I seek their guidance or help. They help me to feel that there are still those who want me to be my best self, and I'm truly grateful for them. And I could not have put that better myself. Which leads me to the people that deserve the biggest gratitude, our team back here. They do the work and serve our clients day in and day out with their knowledge, experience, passion for Talbot County's older adults. So our nurses, Kimberly Mitchell, Veronica Ryan-Bolt, Kate Stinton, and Judy Fontleroy, our social workers, Debbie Toad and Mary Sellers, and our CNA, Donna Jenkins. So much gratitude. And I'm sorry I went over ten minutes.
That's a good job, really good job. Dr. Farmi, you gotta say something now. Come on now, I'm gonna give you fifteen, I'll give you fifteen seconds, okay?
This is tough to, to, I mean, to go over what she just described, humbling to be part of her team. Without her support and, and knowledge and a wonderful team behind, behind, behind her, I can't take any credit. This is not me. It's all done.
You definitely got a phenomenal team behind you, that's for sure. We really appreciate everything you guys do for Talbot County, because we need you, and we really, everything that you do means so, so much to the seniors and just people in general. You do very good care, so.
And also, it's something that the council is humbling. I mean, you could see that all this is coming, the council's support is really felt and sensed and smelled, and very, very humbling and very appreciated.
It's partnership. It's a partnership, is what it is. Yep, so.
Counsel? Yep.
I just want to thank you for all that you do, your staff and, and the team back there, because you truly do make a difference in the lives of the people that are trying to stay in their homes that are seniors. So thank you so much for your support and all that you do for the seniors here in Talbot County.
Ditto to that, and also, given the demographic of our county, it's truly, truly appreciated what you do.
Well, this I find to be the easiest decision we get to make every year, because the most compassionate thing that we can do to help people age in place is also the most fiscally and economically responsible move. It just makes sense. I'm grateful to, to you for, for leading this effort and for all involved, and look forward to the, the way this program evolves from senior care and to SOAR in the, in the coming year.
I'll keep it simple. Thank you. Great job. Appreciate each and every one of you for what y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, is there a motion?
I'll move for the senior care plan for the following year, coming year.
Okay, great. So we got a motion second to go ahead and for the plan for next year. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks a lot. I appreciate you guys coming to tonight. Thank you.
So much for having us.
Yep. Okay. Next on the list is the Finance Officers Administration, Martha and her team. Come on up here.
Good evening, Council. Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County.
Caitlin Foster-Clark, Assistant Finance Director.
The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Talbot County for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. This report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. This is the twenty-fifth year that Talbot County has received this award. In addition to the certificate of the award, they also, there were also three awards for myself, our Assistant Finance Director Caitlin Foster-Clark, and recognition of our entire finance team. This award could not be possible without the daily and constant dedication to excellence that all of our staff in the finance office provide to our residents, our businesses, the county council, the county manager, and all of our departments. I am very proud to work with all of these people. And I'd like to introduce four of, actually three, Caitlin wants four, of the people that are here tonight. We have Linda Pittman, who is our accounts payable and payroll manager. And then we have Jen Butler, who has our accounts payable specialist, and Melody Hoffey, who is our accounting manager.
Sounds great. Caitlin? Okay. Mr. Step, can I say a few words?
Don't start me off.
Yep.
You guys, you guys rock. I mean, the, especially like as we get through budget stuff and the amount that you all go through to, to just keep, not only get us in, in a, you know, a good spot where we are, but to, more importantly, to maintain that. And like I said, for, to have this for, for twenty-five years is just, is just awesome. So kudos, job well done to each and every one of you, and thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
Well, of course, we get to see something of an inside look of, of the professionalism, the, the, the superior work that you do for, for the county and, and for our, for our constituents. It's great when somebody outside also recognizes that excellence that you bring to the job. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
It's great what you do and getting this award. You really deserve it. And, you know, it's not a participation award. You've really earned it, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you and your team. Job well done.
Thank you so much. I will say that the, this award is kind of, there are two ways that we can get a, a, a report card for how we do on our budget. So when we're going through the budget, that's putting up, that's one part of it. So then, how, the results of our budget, how we actually perform with our revenues and our expenses is the other report card. And then how we communicate it is what this is. So we're really proud of it.
We're proud of us.
So as your county manager, I couldn't be more proud of our finance team under Martha's leadership with Caitlin and her staff. We depend on them every day. They work with all of our department heads, and we have certainly elevated the bar each year with them in place. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for the job that you all do.
Thank you.
Martha, you, Martha, you want to get your team, come on up?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Come on up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We're proud of you. Get your hair ready. Get your hair ready. Get your hair ready.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Okay, that was great. Okay, Madam Secretary, next on the agenda is introductory legislation. You want to go ahead and read that into the record for us?
A bill to amend Chapter eleven of the Talbot County Code, alcoholic beverages for the purposes of permitting on-premises consumption of beer, wine, and liquor at alcohol dispensary bistros, expanding the seating capacity for alcohol dispensary bistros, exempting Class I licenses issued for an urban location from the market tests set forth in Section eleven dash eight D two. If the municipality in which the urban location is located does not have an existing alcohol dispensary bistro holding a valid Class I license, and exempting Oxford Conservation Park from the five-hundred-foot distance restriction for new off-sale licenses.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Sounds great. A show of hands or introduction?
Introduced by council?
This will be known as Bill Number sixteen twenty-three. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, December ninth, at five-thirty P M.
Okay, that sounds great. I appreciate it. Okay. Next on the agenda would be some discussion on the cannabis zoning tax amendment from the Planning Commission.
Yes, Council President, before we proceed, I, I can give a summary of the, of the bill, or we have, this was actually requested by Adam Lynn on behalf of his client.
Sure.
Mr. Lynn and his client, I believe, are here, and they may want to just speak a little bit about
Yes, sir.
the nature of what it is they're proposing.
No problem. Yep.
Good evening. Thank you. I'll be brief.
Okay.
So the Class I license.
Could you introduce yourself, please? Yep.
Adam Lynn. I'm the attorney for the recent family who's pushing the bill forward. So Class I license is a relatively new license in Talbot County, and it's always, it's gone through, I think, one other amendment since it was enacted, and it's always been kind of tailored for. always been kind of tailored for somebody trying to do something. And, um, we're trying to give it a practical approach that's going to allow for others, uh, at a limited scope where people aren't going to have to come back in the future. Um, it's not going to create a, uh, a, there's a restriction on how many Class Is, um, would be able to be granted. Um, and I think it's just a little bit more broad, but specific enough to, um, achieve its goals without having any problems for the community. So, if there are questions or...
Mm-hmm. That's good. Okay, any, any, any questions, counsel?
No questions here.
Okay. All right. All right, we appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are talking about, um, the, 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 uh, establishment of Latitude Thirty-eight, correct?
Correct.
And that, you know, and we're trying to open that up. And, and is it going to be trying to open that up next year?
Spring.
Spring?
Yeah.
Okay, got you.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, we wish you luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Okay, um. Thank you, Patrick. Anything else from you or you good?
Not on that. No, I have comments on the cannabis.
Okay, let's, 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 yeah, let's go ahead and, and, and discuss the cannabis zoning tax amendment, okay?
Yes, so, um, you have, uh, proposed cannabis regulations that were requested by Council Member Hade, um, for referral to the Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
These are similar to the regulations the, the council previously considered, um, with some changes. Uh, those changes are, uh, increasing the minimum setbacks from five hundred feet, uh, which could, could be reduced in the prior bill to two hundred feet with consent. This actually increases them to a thousand feet from any property containing a pre-existing residential or institutional use. It increases the minimum lot size from twenty acres in the original bill to seventy-five acres for, for growing. Uh, it separates cannabis processing for, for cannabis grown on-site versus cannabis grown off-site. Um, so that cannabis processing for cannabis grown on-site would be agricultural and cannabis processing for cannabis grown off-site would be institute, and, I'm sorry, industrial. And it makes, uh, cannabis growing and on-site processing a special exception use rather than a permitted use as it was in the, in the prior bill. And, uh, lastly, makes off-site processing a special exception use in the V. M. and G. C. zoning districts and permitted in the L. I. zoning district, which is similar to alcohol production facilities and food and beverage pack, packaging and processing.
Okay. All right. So, um, at this time, we need a motion to go ahead and send it to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hade?
Aye.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, Patrick. I appreciate that.
Mr. Callahan, did, did, uh, I may have missed it. Did we announce a hearing date in Bill number four, the, the alcohol beverage?
We did. We did, yep. Sixteen twen-
December ninth?
Yep.
December ninth and?
Five thirty.
Okay.
And it builds sixteen twenty-three. Yep.
Okay.
Hard to believe I remember that, you know. Okay, all right, good job.
Just keeping on top of it.
Just trying to keep on top of it. Yep. Okay, next is, um, elections for, um, the council up here. And this will be for, uh, president.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Congratulations, Council President Callahan.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, counsel. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chuck.
Thank you.
And thank you for serving.
Yep, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. And this would be for vice president.
Just a note for the public, this is the only thing during the year that we do by secret ballot.
But it's announced immediately, the results.
Yes, we do. Yes, it is.
No mail-in votes here. Exactly. Yep.
Congratulations, Vice President Lusher.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel. Appreciate it. Um, and we got Clay stuff next.
There we go.
County manager.
Good evening. Congratulations, counsel. Um, uh, look forward to working with President Callahan and Vice President Lusher and, uh, the council to complete a lot of things you started and it's going to be exciting next year. Um, under county manager report, I'd like to ask, uh, you have no boards and committee appointments this week. I'd like to ask Cassandra Van Hoosier to come up, your Director of Economic Development and Tourism. She has a request for you regarding, um, awarding contract for bid number twenty-four zero five, Talbot County Travel Guide, and I'll fill in anything that, uh, is necessary. I'll hand it to you.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Congratulations on your election.
Yep.
Look forward to working with you all again.
Yep.
All five of you.
Me too.
Uh, so I'm here to request a, an amendment, uh, to the agreement with, uh, A. P. G. Chesapeake. Uh, they printed our guide last year and when we put out the R. F. P., uh, we put in a clause that it could be renewed upon approval by both parties, uh, written approval, and, uh, we have come to an agreement with them for the same terms as we had last year, for them to do the advertising, sales, and printing of our guide. They did a beautiful job. Uh, I think we've got the best-looking guide, uh, we've ever had. And, uh, the cost to us would be, uh, approximately eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one. We budget for that and we do that in advertising. We purchase our ads, uh, in the guide. And, uh, so they'll do the sales and, uh, uh, do the printing. We do the production, the writing, the content, everything.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the amendment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hade?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cassandra.
And a good job.
And now, like, Micah Risher to come forward, your airport manager. He has three items for you this evening. The first item that he has, he's going to speak to you about, is, um, requesting council approval for sole source procurement from East Coast Aviation to furnish and install a new T. C. S. three thousand unit on fuel pumps for both jet fuel and A. V. gas. Micah?
Hey, thanks, Clay. Counsel, good evening. Micah Risher, your airport manager. Uh, so, of course, you know, our fuel farm is literally the, the lifeblood, the heart of the operation out there. If we can't move fuel, uh, you know, all the other fancy stuff doesn't really, you know, count. Uh, earlier this year, um, our fuel farm is, is aged. We're, most of the components are twenty to thirty years old. Earlier this year, we had a, a, a meter fail. It was our jet meter, which is a big deal. Um, thanks to the, you know, the crew and the ingenuity of our staff, we got it back running quickly by robbing Peter to pay Paul. We took parts from the ab gas meter to get the jet meter running. All summer, we've been manually metering, uh, ab gas from the tank into the fuel trucks as a temporary solution. While we researched the, the best fix, we found the best fix to be this T. C. S. three thousand electronic register. That's a meter, uh, register equipment. We contacted the manufacturer. They recommended that we contact, um, Eastern, um, uh, Eastern Aviation. They, we, they finally came out and gave us a price on it of about fifty-three thousand dollars is the estimate. Could rise a little bit once we actually dig into the system and start making some repairs, which is why I requested an amount not to exceed sixty-five, exceed sixty-five thousand dollars in case once we dig into both of these, uh, systems, there's other repairs of piping or, or other ancillary things that need to be replaced.
And I'm just reaffirming that they do have, um, ample funds in place in their budget to cover the request.
Yes, that's correct.
And, so that the manufacturer provided this, this one source, uh, to you that, uh,
That's correct.
That, that has regional, uh, regional monopoly on installation of these systems?
They are the one in the area that they referred us to. We tried, uh, to call other companies. You know, it's, it's not a lot of, you know, fuel dispensing, metering equipment in the region. Um, we were unlucky. We couldn't get anybody from Baltimore to give us a call back. And, and the, the old supplier that we used to use, a company called Murdochs, I literally think they're down to like one or two employees because they just, they stopped returning our call. They, they helped us with the emergency repair, but then they never called us back to give us a quote. So, really, we're dealing with a, you know, a situation where the equipment is kind of specialized and there's not a lot of companies that do it. And this is who the manufacturer recommended us to. And we do believe that the quote is, is fair. Um, we've verified again with the vendor that they can get the work done quickly. And so, um, you know, we, we think they're the best option to use.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We move forward as, as, as discussed.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hade?
Aye.
And, uh, if you'd like, go ahead and move forward with your two other items regarding the stormwater management project.
Yep, thank you, counsel. The second, second and third items are related to the stormwater management features that are being installed, uh, as part of the, um, the modernization program. We already have some stormwater that we installed in, in Package One. More are coming in Package Two and Three. Uh, so essentially, and, and this is a standing thing, once the stormwater features are in, uh, the town of Easton is the, uh, inspecting authority for that. Uh, we already have agreements at other, uh, locations on the airport where they come in periodically and inspect the stormwater, make sure things are, you know, uh, the vegetation is proper, things aren't eroding, things of that nature. So, what this is, is literally adding the new stormwater feature easements and covenants to, um, you know, which we already have for, for the, uh, in place with the town.
Okay.
If it's possible, I'll make a motion to, uh, move forward with both easement requests, items C and D.
Second.
Okay. Well, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hade?
Aye.
Thank you, Micah. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, counsel. Um, the only, uh, last thing I have, I wanted to make an announcement. The county offices will be closed on Tuesday, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, in observance of Veterans Day. And that completes your county manager report for this evening. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
And again, congratulations on your elections. Look forward to working with you all.
Okay. Thank you. Good job. Um, okay, next, um, Jess, is there any, anything?
Not tonight.
Not, nothing tonight? Okay. Um, no, no, no list out there. So, public comment. Anybody want to come up? Huh?
There's nobody left, right?
No, nobody left. It's all you.
It's you.
It's all you.
It's yours.
I, I'll give you thirty seconds. Yep.
I do not waste your time here while I'm waiting.
I'm kidding you. I'm kidding you. You know you're our favorite. You know that.
Sorry?
You're our favorite. You're our favorite. You know that.
Um, to reintroduce myself for the record, wherever that record may be, um, Phil Riggin, resident of Easton two-nine-seven-three-six Sullivan Drive. Um, one of my near-term objectives is going to be to learn everything I possibly can about an alcohol dispensary bistro, because I have no idea what that is. Fascinating term. In any case, um, uh, you folks have your, you know, the, your fingers on the pulse of what's going on here in the county. It's obvious. Um, but there are things that I would like to share with you, which I've shared, I guess, one or two times before, but I, I think they deserve some emphasis. Specifically, it has nothing to do with anything that's been on your agenda today or yesterday or last week or whenever. Um, it has to do with what I consider to be the characteristics of the people who live in Easton Club East, which is where I'm from, where I live. Um, those people care about Easton's future. They care about the people who live here to include those people in spec, in special needs categories because they volunteer to assist some of those people, uh, as, as members of org, for organizations that are of a nonprofit nature. Uh, it's clearly, clearly established record. And the people in Easton Club East stay engaged with officials like you who are decision-makers on, to ensure that we have a voice when, uh, or before even some of the decisions are, are made. Um, we stay engaged. We try to stay engaged by monitoring all the meetings of the county council and the town council. We invite county and town officials to our community to talk with us in town hall settings. In nineteen, in two thousand and twenty-five, we hosted the county, county council president, the mayor, various planning commission officials, uh, the town director of economic development, uh, our own town council representative, the town engineer. I realize these are town, town officials to the great extent, with the exception of Mr. Callahan, but, uh, but I don't think you can really separate the two. I mean, obviously, the two of you have to work, your two groups have to work together. Um, we intend, or I intend to make a recommendation within our community to expand the list of people to be invited to our community on, on key issues, to include, uh, asking some department heads to join us. Now, I realize I have to have your permission or your permission, Mr. Stamp, to, um, to do that, but, uh, I, I do think there are opportunities and I do think there are some, them issues that, that, or even just a, a manner of, um, a nature of how they work and what they do. We'll talk about that as those things approach. Um, one of the most significant things we did last year, this past year, to keep, stay engaged, is that we actually hosted a, a ninety-minute debate between the two candidates who are running for town council president at the time, Mr. Abatello and Mr. Gonzalez. So, um, we do try to stay engaged. Uh, we're taxpayers. We don't, we don't use a lot of taxpayer, tax-supported services. Um, and interestingly enough, and probably unlike most other residents in Talbot County, we've made decisions to spend the rest of our lives here. That's pretty much the way it is. You know, nobody's, nobody's a spring chicken who lives in Easton Club East, um, to include Mr. Step's parents and, and me. Anyhow, I, I, I wanted to share these things with you because I, I, I think it's important to, to give you a sense for when I come here to talk, who I represent and, you know, and, um, what we do and, and what we care about and, and how committed we are to, to the, uh, community of Easton and the, and the larger community of Talbot County. Uh, finally, just one more minute, uh, for thirty seconds. I, I want to congratulate Ms. Sparks and her, and her staff. This is not the first time they've been recognized, as I remember. Um, you, you are served well. She's still there, by the way. You are served well, and I'm sure that she is served well by all the people who work with her. But, and ultimately, the residents of our county are served well. Uh, I want to thank you for publicizing Operation Green Light and recognition of military veterans. Thank you for reminding me. I had forgotten, Ms. Milkie, that you were married to a Vietnam veteran. Um, that's who I am. Not, not your husband, but...
Glad you clarified that.
Wanted to make that distinction. Uh, and I, and I, and I, it's, it's, it's showing up already because I, as I walked around the front of the courthouse coming over to the meeting tonight, there are nothing but green lights.
Yeah.
I assume they're there for that purpose.
Yep.
And, uh, and I, I think it's extraordinary for veterans, current military people um, on active duty and, and those who might be future active-duty members. Um, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Okay, uh... Okay. All right, next is council comments. Mr. Step?
I'll, I'll, I'll again just parlay off of, off of Mr. Rigan's statements and just, just again, another thank you to all our veterans, and, and especially, I called it out earlier to, you know, to all the, all the Marines out there. Again, a special 250th, my dad included, veterans, my father-in-law included, Mr. Rigan, you know, all of our veterans here in Talbot County, just a, a big thank you for all you do. And again, happy waterfowl to everyone as well. Again, hope that's a safe and enjoyable time to everyone, and, yeah, looking forward to next one, just before Thanksgiving.
Pete?
Today Talbot County Public Schools received a bomb threat, which led to the evacuation of a school. This, this, of course, is enormously disruptive for the education of our students, and I speak as not only a member of the community and a member of this council, but as a parent of, of an Easton High School student who was impacted by this. I'll say that the response to this was gratifying. Talbot County Public School staff coordinates well with local law enforcement, both Talbot County Sheriff's Office and Easton Police Department, as well as emergency services. Everyone is in fact safe, and the school has been cleared. And I want to thank all involved for their professionalism and ensuring the safety of students and staff. It is clear that there are very detailed processes in place and leadership to ensure that those processes are adhered to. Even as we sit here, I've received one follow-up communication from Talbot County Public Schools during this meeting with further information. Thank you. It's an unfortunate situation, but kudos to all involved in the response.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher.
Thank you. I wanted to supplement what Councilman Step mentioned. It's also the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Navy, and as a Navy brat, my father served in both World War II and Korea in the Navy, I'd like to recognize that, and also recognize all veterans. And just emphasize that on November 11th, there'll be a Veterans' Day ceremony at VFW Post 5118 on Glebe Road, and our great sheriff's deputy, Mr. Coleman, will be a guest soloist, and Paul Callahan of Trap will be the guest speaker, and it's at 5 o'clock, and I would urge everybody to attend and honor our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think the only thing I would like to say is, is I would like to recognize David McQuade, unfortunately passed away, I think it was about a week ago or so. He was, is, lived in Tillman, a big part of the community, big pillar of the community in Tillman, and really a big part of doing things for the county, too. So we want to give our best to the family and everything, and if they need anything from us, we're, we're here to help them. So, other than that?
The County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 25th, beginning at 5:00 P.M. The council will be convening an open session at 3:30 P.M. and then adjourning into closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth? Aye.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Really appreciate it.